To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion on the agenda. I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion and second, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Polls carried. Consent and recommendation approve the minutes of the October 27, 2014 city council meeting as presented. Recommendation to approve the results of the 2014 general election. Recommendation to announce or authorize the advertisement for the sale by sealed bids for a forfeited 1999 Chevy Tahoe. Recommendation to approve the temporary crossing license with the Racory Construction Trail Board to cross the Racory Trail at Second Avenue South.
All motion.
Second.
Motion and second, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Polls carried. Assessment here of Cassaw Fifth Reconstruction Project. I will now open the assessment hearing at 6:31. With that, I will make a motion to move to continue this public hearing at our November 24th council meeting at 6:30 here at City Hall.
I'll motion for that.
Is that a second? I already motioned it.
Second?
I motioned.
Yep, second then, yep.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Polls carried. Approval of tobacco license for Naval to Reevee from a smoke shop to be located at 24 Third Avenue South for the period of November 11, 2014 through June 30, 2015.
Where's this? What building is it?
What building? It's basically where the old video place used to be. In that building over there on Main Street, across the street, kinda kitty corner from the...
Part of Leon Molder's stuff?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. And that's all in order?
It's all in order, yep. And it's really, it's one of those type of things that there's not much, to be frank, that we can do. I mean, you know, they fit the qualifications and they can sell tobacco and it's Chris Boucher as chief has seen it and knows about it and certainly knows what type of paraphernalia they'll sell there and those kind of things as I put the copy in your packets about. So supposedly all of it's for tobacco.
Other questions? Now I'm gonna entertain a motion.
Moved.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Polls?
Aye.
Public Works report, Paul.
I didn't bring anything along because I thought we were just gonna open the meeting and then postpone it. So for me, I guess first on the agenda was to rehire some part-time ice rink attendants. And we've had all of them working for us before, so it's just a rehire and, you know, we know that, they know what they're doing. Request approval.
What is the minimum wage for municipality?
Same as state and federal.
Which is?
Good question right now. I know, just change.
I think it's eight.
Is it eight or 8.50? Is it eight?
Well, the reason I ask is because if I remember correctly, one of those on that list is less than that.
Right, because he's not an adult. That's the reason. If they're an adult, then they have to fit the federal minimum wage requirement. So Chris Dokendorf helped set this up, so we don't work in compliance a lot. Okay, approve the purchase of a new handheld water...
Let's tackle that one first. I'm gonna entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second? Motion and second, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Polls carried. Okay, moving on, Paul.
The next item, handheld water meter reader. Just a handheld unit that would read the radio signals from the meters. We still have a lot of meters, radios to install on the meters, but for all those that have radios already, just walking by or driving by with this handheld unit, it would take the readings. And then Lois has a docking station on her desk, we can just plug it in and it downloads all that information into her computer for billing. Any rate, the one, the oldest meter, handheld meter reader we have, there's two of them. The oldest one is kind of obsolete, is the first one, and they're giving us $4,250 for its trade-in value to a new one that's worth $5,100. So the old one trade-in value almost pays for the new one, and we can't go wrong with that. And the rest of that request is to buy 75 radios and meters. In the past, we were paying $220 for a radio slash meter combination, and now these are 180. So the prices come down on the meters and the radios. And typically, I don't buy in a lump sum like this. I buy them as we need them, but we buy 75 to 100 a year. And so now, to get that deal on the new handheld meter reader, we have to commit to buying all these now. So just buy them now instead of throughout the year. And we spend more than this on meters and radios through the year. So this is a really good deal, it's just that we have to buy it all, you know, lump sum now.
Do we have to buy them now or do we have to commit to them now? And it's probably just semantics, but...
Buy them.
Buy them now?
Actually, it's supposed to be, in order to get that deal on the radio, you're supposed to buy 150 radios. It has nothing to do with meters because the radios are from Itron, the same company that has the handheld meter reader. So then, the company we're buying from is willing to hold 75 of them over till the next year. Like, they're committing to the 150, they'll sell the extra 75 to somebody else, knowing that we'll buy them next year. Because we buy 75 to 100 every year, and I didn't want to commit to 150, just radios. And we still have to, would have to buy the meters. So we worked out a deal with them, so it's 75 meters and radios each year. And next year, the price won't be quite this much because there wouldn't be the handheld meter reader costs with it. So all in all, we're saving money from what we've been spending in the last years because, again, the combination is $180 instead of $20.
Paul, are these meters you're just replacing, changing out, or...?
Yes, some of them are just as meters fail, we change those out, of course. Other than that, we're trying to set it up in certain areas so that you don't have to get, you don't have to have somebody walk up to a house and read a number off and write it on paper and give that paper to Lois to translate. We're trying to do it to get certain segments of town completely full of radios, so you can just go by with an automatic meter reader. So it's a combination of replacing old ones and just replacing old ones that failed or just replacing other very old meters.
It says here to be paid out of the 2015 budget, then?
Yes, out of the 2015 budget, but we want to order it now so that they can get the handheld meter reader to us and get it all set up for the first reading in January, so that the billing wouldn't happen until January. But I'd be ordering then tomorrow if you approve it.
Looks right to me.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion and second, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Polls carried.
Okay, the next item is for our SCADA system, system control and data acquisition. It's for all the wells, the water towers, the wastewater lift stations, the treatment plant, it's everything, controls on all the water wastewater systems. We have a master controller for the water system at the ground storage tank and master controller for wastewater at the wastewater plant. And all that information comes in over radio from individual wells. Say the ground storage system, the ground storage tank on the west side of town needs some water, so it's sending a radio signal to the wells that we have set up in the SCADA system for at what level it would start and what level, you know, would stop. And then it would send that information by radio over to the south water tower and a repeater up there from the south tower to the master at the wastewater plant. And it's 10 years old and we're having more and more problems with it. And we, you know, 10-year-old electronics is dated. And so it's not surprising we're having a lot more trouble with it. And also, with this system, Tanya and Matt and I, the water wastewater operators, when we get an alarm, there are many hundreds of alarms for our water and wastewater systems. Think of all the lift stations, the towers, the wells, the wastewater plants. And when we get an alarm, if we're not at work, then it would call one of our cellphones. And then from the cellphone, if you have the laptop with you, there's two laptops, one that I keep and one that Tanya and Matt trade, whoever's the operator on duty for the week keeps that one, then they'd have to get a landline, a phone line, and plug in, so then they can control from the information at the wastewater plant. At the wastewater master, which again, controls water, wastewater, everything. And that's, it's becoming more of a problem just finding a landline. For instance, Matt Ackman has a landline only for that reason. And then when he goes to his girlfriend's place, she doesn't have a landline, so then he doesn't, doesn't even do any good to bring the computer along. If he gets a call, then he just has to go to work, do a work call. Otherwise, some, a lot of times with this system, you can take care of a problem from home. Let's say an air blower fails. You could disable that blower, disable the alarm, start another blower and confirm that it's working and that the dissolved oxygen levels are right. You can do a lot of that stuff from wherever you are with your computer. And with this new system, you'd be able to do that on a smartphone. And with a really good security on it, so we don't have to worry about anybody else being able to tap into our controls. So it's a, you know, mainly, I couldn't justify it, just if we're gonna get into the cellphone control instead of having to plug our laptop computer into a phone line. But there's so many other problems we're having with it now, it's just old and it's just time to update. And I noticed on the agenda that it isn't written up quite right. If you have, if you have the request for council action, that one I have it split up to the water and wastewater departments. That's 11,265 for water, 45,061 for wastewater. And on the agenda, it just shows 45,000 to be split, 80/20. So what's on the agenda is incorrect. So I laid them out as individual, so you have the budget line item for each department.
What was the water one again?
11,265.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion and second, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Polls carried.
Thank you. Discuss proposed road maintenance agreement with Wakefield Township. Heidi and I have been working on this for a while now, along with Ron Foxx and Todd.
Is Todd's last name?
Mink.
Okay. And it's really, it's, snow plowing recommendations we have for sharing, they plow some of our roads, we plow some of theirs, that just makes sense. For instance, picture Sock River Road going past the Public Works Building, past Keys, past Golden Plum. Well, when you get past Golden Plum, that little bit of it down in the end is Township. Well, it don't make any sense to have them plow that and we plow most of it. So we plow that. And there's areas like that where they're plowing most of it and there's a little section for us, so they plow it for us. And we've been doing that for a long time, it works out really good. But this agreement, you know, includes snow plowing, but it's a lot more in-depth. There are some roads where we really don't know in the past who really has responsibility for them. A lot of them are simple. Picture up at Greystone Road, you go up North on Two, Distribution Center, Business Park in this side, go down Greystone Road, well, the north side of it, where the church is located, well, that's city. So that's city from Highway Two then until the east end of their property. But others aren't that simple in common sense. And I'm not sure how to explain why they're set up that way. So you come off of Highway 23 onto Third Street Southeast, or what's always been Chapel, and that, a section of that is still Mindott because they didn't turn it back to us yet because of the water issues we have coming through the tar on City View Road. So that's, that's still state. And then you go a little further north and it's split pretty much 50/50. The west side is city and the east side is township. And then when you get to Hummingbird Lane, Hummingbird Lane going east is entirely city on both sides of the street, which really surprised us. You think the south side, because of Emma's, would be city and the north side would be township because that side is not annexed into the city. But that's not the way it is. And then when you get up, close to the turn into Emma's Estates, then it's township on both sides of the road. And then you go further north, it's all township going up through Boulder View, and then you come down into a cul-de-sac that we have there that's city, then we have to go through all of the township roads, drive over their roads, pack their snow down, so we can get in, plow our little cul-de-sac. And so we're just trying to get an agreement to make that all flow smoother. You know, for the snow plowing, we can improve what we're doing now for the benefit of the township and the city. And let's say we seal, have to seal coat a road or replace it. Now, who pays? You know, so this agreement is critical to show, we use Dan Crone a lot to help set this up, you know, with his, all of his surveying, this all makes perfect sense to him. And he got it set up in percentages, say, Third Street Southeast, from Highway 23 to Hummingbird, we know what percent the city and what percent is township. I kind of explained how it, in a few ways, is kind of mixed up, but he also lays it on percentage. So if we decide that we're gonna seal coat the road, we know the percentage paid by the city and the township. So it's critical that we get this done, and I guess, we're not, it isn't really quite complete yet, is it, Heidi?
We're working on it.
Yeah. Anything to add to that from the board?
No, we really didn't, we had, we adjourned at 1:00 AM and we didn't get a chance to talk about it. So we will be, we didn't adjourn, actually, we recessed. And so we'll be having another meeting, and by then I hope to incorporate some of Dan's attachments. And we may, I believe our next meeting is coming up sometime in the middle of November, and maybe we would have an opportunity to meet again, I'm not sure. So I don't think we set up our next meeting.
No.
And so I think what I'll do is take some time and take a look at that now that the election is over, I'll have a little bit more time. And then, you know, hopefully we can keep working towards a presenting, a contract that we can present, that we can both present.
Sure.
And then with any questions, either from the city council or the township board, hopefully we can, you know, square it all away and get everything taken care of so that it's beneficial for the community.
Oh, nice. And I'll gladly attend the township meeting too, if you want me there.
Yeah, once we get that far. Sure.
So we just wanted to let you know generally what we're doing and why.
It sounds good. Sounds real good.
Anything else, Paul?
Winter.
Yes, it is.
Can I, can I ask you a question, Paul? Ken Kramer called me and he asked about the school having three extra city lights. Are you aware of this?
Well, he just told me about it this afternoon while I was trying to do snow, and I just told him, I can help with that, I just, I'll get in touch with them tomorrow, to get to three exact locations where they want a city street light. And then I can, you know, forward that on to Excel.
He just called me and just, and he just says that you were kind of busy, he didn't know if you understood everything he wanted, 'cause I guess that must have been crazy for you, so. He says, just remind Paul again about three lights.
I just told him I'll get in touch tomorrow.
All right, sounds good. Thank you.
Other questions for Paul? Paul?
Now that we have Paul here and now that the snow is falling, can I ask a question with regards to the, going over the parking regulations with snowfall? Can you just take a couple minutes and maybe you need to talk to Paul, or maybe you need to talk to Angie, or, but between the three of you, can you just mention what the parking requirements are now that we have snow?
Sure. Should I handle it or do you want to take it?
Give it a whirl.
Okay, I guess if we have over an inch of snow, we might be plowing. And if your car's in the way, it's gonna get a ticket or a toll. It's very time-consuming and expensive when there's cars parked there. Somebody that leaves their vehicle might not think much of it. We drive around it, kind of, you know, plow snow up, kind of close to their car, but then we have to go back and clean it up again. Just think of the time and the cost to go back for each car that was on the street. So if you, if you get a parking ticket, I think it's 20, 30 bucks? And I don't know how much a tow typically is. Oh, yeah. Definitely more than that. So I guess if there's, if there's more than an inch of snow, just keep your vehicles off the road or expect a ticket or a tow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else for Paul? Paul, nothing? Okay. City engineer report, I guess Brian's not here tonight because of the weather, so...
Sure.
And I asked him not to, he was kind of planning to brave it and I thought, I don't think it makes any sense.
City administrator report, Paul?
Yeah, I'll just try to keep mine brief, otherwise it's in written form too. Had a nice meeting with Golden Plum last week, there were a number of us there, it was coordinated by EDA Director Dan Style. And a lot of council members there, a lot of EDA members there, myself, Mr. Heschin, of course, too. And it was just a nice meeting to be able to welcome Golden Plum to the community, their new business, changes that they've made, they're looking for a lot of jobs. Matter of fact, they told us that day they were looking at at least a good 40 extra jobs are open now, and I see they've actually changed the banner out in front of Golden Plum itself. They had a banner up there of a local farmer, to now they have a job opening type of banner. So if you're looking for a job, Golden Plum's got jobs available. So anyway, that was a nice, nice day. The mayor gave Representative Keys to the City to Golden Plum, so it was a very, very neat event. And I think they appreciated it greatly too that we were there. Also last week, Acting Mayor Jan Dingman and I, we went to the League of Minnesota Cities Regional Meeting in Wake Park, learned a lot of neat stuff there, good networking thing. Some of the biggest things was really just data security. That's one of my goals that I presented to you guys and like, you know, kind of cracking down on backups, but also the idea of just infiltration of outside influences into our system. So little things, you know, like, and we've done this already, the city, when you switch over a copier, most people don't think of a copier having a hard drive into it, but a copier literally takes a picture, every single thing that you've ever copied on there, and some people have copied some funny things on there, are actually stored on that, on that hard drive. So when you get rid of a copier, change it out, ask for the hard drive itself to destroy or ensure that they've given a slip that says it has been wiped clean. And we had one, we changed out about a year or so ago, a year ago, year or so ago, with Marco, and we actually then got a slip, because I demanded that, I said, like, "Can we please have the..." You know, I was gonna go out to Public Works and have some fun smashing the thing, you know, but they gave us a slip that said it was completely wiped. So if it ever turn up somewhere, addresses or things like that, we can go straight to Marco and say, "You wiped it." Anyway, neat things like that. Legislative Candidates Forum was there just in time for Election Day, so that was a neat little forum where they kind of talked about a number of things. We came up in that panel discussion a few times due to our issues with the DNR and finding water. So really, those that were going off to St. Paul and then now made it to St. Paul are dedicated and they have a high resolve to be able to help us out with our issues with the DNR and then just the law itself, the 2010 law on Brewery Creek and Trout Stream. So that was a good thing. MNCAR convention last week, a lot of acronyms here. MNCAR stands for the Minnesota Commercial Association of Realtors, and that was something that Dan Style also coordinated. And Jim Kramer from the EDA and I went to it down in Minneapolis. And neat event, basically it's a lot of real estate agents and land brokers looking to expand their business all over the state. And it's a no-nonsense convention, it only lasts just a few hours, and it was, we thought it was super helpful. There was a couple cities that were represented there, a few other counties. We ran into Bill Kemp of the St. Cloud Area Economic Development Association, and we had talked about next year, maybe even the idea of having a, maybe a shared booth with them, or at least have one with us coupled with a number of businesses in town, like Golden Plum, Cold Spring, the brewery, other businesses that, maybe even the bakery, to be able to have like a stand there, we would have like, you know, chicken wings from Golden Plum, be able to have some beer available from the brewery, because that's allowed at this convention. It's a non-public entity convention that way. So you know, things that could really stand out and make Cold Spring stand out, so other realtors and commercial brokers can say, "Hey, let's go check out the Cold Spring booth and check out their town." So Dan will be presenting that at a future EDA meeting and talking about that. Also, what was super interesting there is Secretary of State Mark Ritchie talked about world fairs. And most of us didn't think that world fair still existed, you know, when you think of the Seattle World's Fair, the New York World's Fair, I think Vancouver had one too, you just think that they're kind of this thing of the past. They still have world fairs, the United States just has not had any as of late, and they basically have two different kinds. One, that's a bit of a smaller quote-unquote fair, and then the huge gigantic international one, both lasting about three or so months. And we are trying for 2023 to get one here in Minnesota. Don't know the location yet, but Mark Ritchie is basically the chair of that, and now that he will be no longer Secretary of State, 100% of his energies, he said, will be dedicated toward bringing that to Minnesota. They're looking for 61 acres, so it's no, nothing, the small is still big, and make a pavilion there, and what we were hoping for is make a landmark. I mean, in Seattle, the Space Needle itself was made for their World's Fair, and it's a worldwide landmark because of the World's Fair. So we're hoping that we can bring in that kind of notoriety to Minnesota and hopefully just a ton of tourism. For us, in Cold Spring, the idea of taking advantage of the World's Fair, a lot of people come to those and want to go on day trips, so we can say like, "Hey, come out to Cold Spring for the day and have a brewery tour," or "Check out the town," or things like that. So we really want to kind of be poised that if we get that in 2023, that we would do our holy best in town to bring some of those folks into town and bring some of that money into town. Carrie Petrie is our new reporter, our new journalist from the St. Cloud Times that's been assigned to us, she's been assigned to all area cities around St. Cloud. She wasn't able to make it here tonight due to the storm, but she, her and I had a wonderful conversation last week, and literally both of us said we want to make amends and start new. We know the relationship between the Times and our city has been terrible in the last several months, and rather than playing the blame game and going through more nitpicking, we just want to say, "Let's start from scratch." So I want to take that at face value and run with it, and hopefully that's what we see into the future. And already we've seen a few stories from Carrie, she did a nice Halloween story of up in North Point, the Shindells up there had a nice little Halloween thing for kids and the world to see, so I have... So I have high hopes for Carrie Petrie and the city and forging new ground with the St. Cloud Times. Engineering meetings, we'll get more into that when, at the next meeting, but Brian and I have been basically working on a number of things when it comes to our assessment role and just getting that cleaned up. And as of tomorrow, we are closed in the city, so this may not air then, but we certainly want to say on behalf of the staff here in the city of Cold Spring, as well as council, all of us, a happy Veterans Day and thank you to all veterans alive and those that have passed. Thank you.
Good job. List of bills. Recondense to approve payment of accounts payable according to the list and supplement list presented by city staff.
I'll make my motion.
Motion and a second. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Do you have questions, comments from anybody? I'm going to attend the motion to adjourn.
I'll make my end motion.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Hold. Carry.